The city council meeting for Monday, August 10th will now come to order. Please stand for the pledging of allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, City Council, City Treasurer, Mayor, audience. This is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting for August 10th, 2020. Madam Chair, roll call was taken at our previous special meetings and we do have a quorum. Okay. This meeting is also being held via the Zoom meeting app. The meeting ID number is 898-0856-0231. Again, the meeting ID number is 898-0856-0231. If you would like to dial in, the phone number is 646-558-8656. Enter the meeting ID number followed by the pound sign. Tonight's regular council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one, agenda. Number two, minutes. Number three, petition room. Number four, chairperson's report. Five, mayor's report. Six, clerk's report. Seven, treasurer's report. Eight, public comment. Nine, unfinished business. Ten, new business. Eleven, warrant. Twelve, communication. And number thirteen, adjournment. And a motion being ordered to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So moved. Support.
The motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Abdo to approve the agenda for this meeting. Ms. Webb, Ms. Abdo, Ms. Williams? Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Next, two A are the approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting held on August 3rd, 2020.
So move for approval of the minutes held August 3rd, 2020.
Support.
It's been motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb for the approval of the minutes from the meeting August 3rd, council meeting. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb? Ms. Williams? Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Item two B for approval are the amended minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on Monday, July 27th. We found an error in the minutes and so we wanted to bring corrected copy for your approval.
I'll move for approval of the amended minutes from the regular council meeting held on Monday, July 27th, 2020.
Support.
It's been motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb to approve the amended minutes from the July 27th meeting. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
There are no petitioners on the agenda. Number four is the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to continue to keep the Barton family lifted up. As you see, still Willis family. We want to just keep them continually in prayers for him and his family, his wife, his children, his son. So just keep the Barton family lifted up and pray for his return. My favorite topic is census. I'm going to keep that lifted up. For everybody to please spread the word. Reported out last week that we did break the 70% mark for Romulus. We're above the national rate of 63.3, the Michigan rate of 69%, and the Wayne County rate of 64.1%. We topped them all, but again, we can't do this alone. We need everybody's help so that we can get the monies needed for our city across the board for the state of Michigan. So again, spread the word. Tell somebody, if you know somebody who has not done the census, ask them and check. And we need to get those census numbers up across the state of Michigan. And then we do have signage. I think we're talking about we're going to be looking at strategies to get that signage out across our city to get the awareness lifted up about the census. So that's more to come. So hopefully, we don't have a meeting next week, but the week after we'll see, have the strategy in place so that we can get our census numbers up. And again, let's just spread the word. We need those dollars for our community. We need those money. So please continue to talk that up. And on that note, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Need a motion to accept the chairperson's report.
I'll make that motion. We accept the chairperson's report.
Support.
I have the motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb to accept the chairperson's report. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
And number five is the mayor's report.
Good evening, City Council, Treasurer, Clerk, and our listening audience. The quote I brought for tonight kind of goes and slits and ties in the boat that we're all faced with with this world we're living in with COVID and so forth. Union strength, when there's teamwork and collaboration, wonderful things can be achieved. I need everyone's help to make sure that we're making the right moves and protecting our public. And as you know, we've had to have some limited services, some buildings closed. And so tonight, I'm going to invite Andy McKay from the Rack to come up and talk about all the steps that we've taken. We've been diligently working with Rink management. We've been doing regular phone calls. We had a conference call with them today. They've been very supportive. Tifa's been very supportive, but we still don't have a green light from the governor's office yet. I talked to our lobbyist today. He's got very good relations with the governor's office and he said that he couldn't give me any timeline. Their number one priority right now is obviously schools. But he has voiced that concern for our behalf and many others. So we're doing everything above and beyond to be prepared. And that was part of our initiative with some video a few weeks ago was to showcase what Andy and his team and our team have worked on to ensure public safety. But I just thought if I were on council, I'd want to maybe have a chance to hear from Andy himself. So Andy, could you please come up and address City Council? And if you want to take the mask off while you're talking there, it's okay. Just put it back on when you're done. Thank you.
Thank you for that. No issue wearing them when you talk. It's almost like the sweat builds up a little bit. Thanks, Mayor, for having us out. Council members, Madam Clerk, Madam Treasurer. Just so close about five months ago and went down from a staff of 97 to a staff of two for the first two months. Now we're up to about five, but we have been managing to do some work. And one of the things, obviously, that the mayor mentioned, you know, gyms seem to be in last place in terms of the reopening guidelines. And some of that makes a lot of sense. People sweat, people, you know, breathe hard, huffing, that type of stuff. Our goal always since the initial shutdown has been whenever we reopen, we have to do it safe. And only way this works is if all our members feel that we're safe. So we, just much like the state and the country, we've done a three-phase reopening. The first phase, obviously somewhat limited. It's going to be members only, really no basketball, volleyball, pickleball, that type of stuff. No really core games. Just kind of the working on machines. If they let us open the pools, we'll obviously open the pools. Second stage, be a little bit relaxed, start allowing day passes again, things like that. And then the third stage would be, you know, kind of like you remembered it. Obviously, world, country, fitness industry in general, nothing's going to be the same after this. So unfortunately, we've had to make some changes. Certain things we've done, and all of this is obviously primarily for the health of our members, done for the health of our staff, for our seniors. We have to kind of protect everyone as we've seen just all around. Some people take this very seriously, some people not at all. So got to make sure we can kind of mesh everything together. We've installed new screening and policies for employees with signs of COVID-19. I have a new check-in policy for members of the club. When you come in, you'll have a short question in here and answer. New check-in procedures. Number one, there's plexiglass all over the front desk, kind of like what you have here. We've also purchased the automated card readers and scanners. So anything you sign, like our staff basically isn't handling. Try to keep, you know, any contamination down that way. We have floor markers basically at the front desk, kind of illustrating which way to go, kind of where to stand. The main staircase will be the staircase up. Two side case, two side staircases will be the staircase down. Again, just trying to keep everyone socially distant, not going the same way, kind of breathing in the same air. We moved all 80, so we have 81 pieces of equipment out of fitness floor. This took some doing, but we moved it all over the club. So when you come in, your certain elliptical that you like may not be in the same place. We have it all through the main concourse, all situated concessions, all kind of upstairs now in our teen center. So we moved it all over. The great part about it, everything's got about six, six and a half to seven feet of space between it. So obviously, all with social distancing in mind. When we do get to have fitness classes, kind of indoors again, our group fitness room, our dance room. Also, our teen gym now has Xs in it, all eight feet apart. So if you're taking your yoga class, you're not going to be, you know, right up next to Sally or whatnot. All the chairs that we used to have, chairs, tables, couches, all that stuff is all moved out into storage, replaced with single chairs. Obviously, again, trying to keep down, you know, congregating and respectful distancing. We purchased atomized mist sprayers. These things are kind of cool. I like kind of working, working with them. The city actually did a video that will show on the cable, so you actually get to see when it's used. This will come in handy, though, after you're done working out on your treadmill, after you're done working out on your weight machine. One of our staff will come over with the mist sprayer, actually hose it down for three minutes and then kind of dust it off. So the next person is guaranteed that that piece of equipment is clean. Under the first phase as well, first family or the men's and women's locker rooms will shut down. That'll just be the family. And the same thing, you'll go into the family, you use the locker room, use the restroom, you'll come out, we'll have an attendant there. That person will come in and spray everything down. Everything will be clean, everything will be sanitized. And then the last thing, we had 10 kind of hand sanitizer, what I would call sanitizing stations on the board post-COVID. We now have 37. You will be basically within six to seven feet of hand sanitizer and洁头发. This, no, that's just kind of some of the stuff we've done. Air handler units, anything we could. So the air handler units over the pool, also the 10 main ones that do the main parts of the building, all been adjusted. Now that they're at their maximum, so they're bringing in 30% of outside air, which again, just trying to get, you know, everything nice and clean. Many more things that we could delve into in terms of phases and what happens when. So much of this, though, is dependent on the governor, what she says, when she says it, how many people we can have, that type of stuff. So just like everyone else, we're kind of waiting, but we're ready. So my message to everybody would be, you know, come back when you feel able. As far as our memberships go, you're not going to lose any time. If you had been paying monthly, all those payments have been stopped. Those payments will resume when we open. If you paid in full, you're not losing any time. All that time will be added, so five months and, you know, however many days until we open. That'll all get added to the end of the membership. In addition to that, because we may not be opening all at once. The pool may not open at once, basketball courts may not open, you know, first. So we're allowing you the opportunity to restart your membership when you would like. So if we open September 1st and you say, you know what, Andy, I don't think it's safe. I want to just see how it goes. We want to start summer first, we're going to let you do that too. So none of the current customers will lose anything. Like I said, we're just ready to go. We just hope to get the chance at some point soon, so.
Do you think I have anything to add, Andy?
I wanted to put in a plug for Rink was on our call. And one thing that they did qualify for was the payroll protection plan. So they've been paying employees at this club, the only site location I'm aware of that they've been doing that. So that was good of them to do that and help through the pandemic as well. I just hope and pray we can get that thing up and going and applaud Andy for his efforts. It looks good. We're ready, like you said, but good job.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, I really love the fact that you have so many stations of hand sanitizer within that distance. I mean, that really helps and makes you feel more comfortable. I know when I went to Carpenters the other day, they didn't have any hand wipes or hand sanitizers. And, you know, they looked at me like I was crazy because I asked for it. So to hear that the Rink Center has that many, thank you, thank you, thank you.
And I mean, thank you for that. But I mean, what we're finding out is some of these gyms are opening legally. Some gyms really have no, no plan at all. It's just a, hey, just like we did before type deal. If this is going to work, everybody that comes to our club has to feel safe. Not only they have to feel safe, they actually have to see us feel safe. So that's what we strive for.
Thanks, Andy.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Council, for the comments and questions. Couple just shout-outs to give this week on the 15th. I wanted to wish Councilwoman Kathy Abdo happy birthday. And then on the 16th, our Treasurer Stacy Page, happy birthday this week as well. Bear with me, Council, I have a lot of items under my report, so I'll try to get through them and get through them in a way that everybody is on top of what we're doing. First item for action is 5A. And what you have before you is a request from Tanya Cofield, a Recreation Department Coordinator. And this is a request for a pretty simple one, just a no-fee permit for the use of the historical park. That's for the Downriver Historical Organizations, next meeting that they're going to have on the 15th. And that year is 2020, not 2002.
To the Chair, if I may, I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and authorize a no-fee permit for the use of the historical park for the Downriver Historical Organizations.
The part?
It's been motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Abdo for the, to concur with the administration and authorize a no-fee permit for the use of the historical park for the Downriver Historical Organizations, next meeting on 8/15/2020. And I just want to say, just I think Mark Lukewitz brought this. I thought this was great as I was looking through the information. It's the Downriver Historical Organization, so all the different counties in the Downriver area. And then what they have out here is working together to promote our history. And I like the working together piece, that's just phenomenal. That should be done across the board and just promoting history. So that's an exciting, is that meeting open to anybody or just to the members?
It's for the association. I'm sure it's in the parks. If somebody has interest, might be a good place to pick up some contacts.
Okay, no, just wondering, thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The next item is a recommendation from Gary Harris, our Purchasing Director, and Maria Ferris, our Finance Director and Legal Counsel. This is the one that you've all heard about from Director Kraus. The request is to concur with the administration and grant the authorization for the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached lease purchase agreement with Comerica Leasing for a lease purchase of a 2020 Spartan S-180 pumper truck. The amount's $430,274 at a fixed interest rate of 1.93%, which is awesome. For four years, first payment to be made on or about the 15th of 2021. The city would own that vehicle at the term of the lease. And our, the amount is $113,000. That's coming out of the motor vehicle fund capital outlay.
I'll make that motion that we enter into the attached lease purchase agreement with Comerica Leasing for the lease purchase of a 2020 Spartan S-180 pumper truck.
Support.
Been motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb to concur with the administration and grant authorization for the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached lease purchase agreement with Comerica Leasing for the lease purchase of a 2020 Spartan S-180 pumper truck in the amount of $430,274. Any discussion? Hearing Ms. Abdo? Yes. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The next item is a recommendation from Kathy Hood, Assistant DPW Director, and also Gary Harris, Purchasing Director. The request is to concur to administration award bid contract from ITB 17/18-05. That's for replacement modification of garage doors at 35255 Goddard from the lowest, most responsible and responsive bidder, West Metro Door. According to Vern Morris, those funds have been verified and available out of the capital outlay account listed.
To the Chair, if I may, I'd like to make that motion to concur and award the contract from bid ITB 17/18-05.
Part?
It's been motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Abdo to concur with administration and award the contract from bid ITB 17/18-05 for the replacement and modification of the garage doors at 35255 Goddard from, from the lowest, most, from the, to the lowest, most responsible and responsible and responsive company, West Metro Door. Any discussion? Ms. Webb? Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Next request is also from Kathy Hood, Assistant DPW Director, and Gary Harris, Purchasing Director. This is also a request to concur to administration, extend ITB 17/18-05 with RJ Perry Carpentry, Inc. for the modification repairs for bathrooms at the former, what we called firehouse, as you approved their lease last week. The amount of that is $28,367. And those funds have been verified and available out of the capital outlay account listed.
I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and extend ITB 17/18-05 with RJ Perry Carpentry, Inc. for the modification and repairs.
Support.
It's been motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Abdo to concur with administration, extend ITB 17/18-05 with RJ Perry Carpentry, Inc. for the modification and repairs of the bathrooms at the former firehouse in the amount of $28,367,000. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
I noticed in each one of these it says does not include permit costs. So who's responsible?
Because it's our building, we can waive those, yes.
And real quick question, ma'am, do you know, would these complete all the repairs that need to be done to the firehouse?
These are a majority of what, when they came before us, that said we had to do certain things.
Right.
Regardless who we leased to. Now, they're going to do things on their end.
Okay.
But as you heard the gentleman, the doors were one that they had to be replaced.
Yeah.
Bathroom, it's got to have an up-to-date bathroom. So these, this will complete the majority of the stuff on our end.
Okay.
But they're going to be diligently working on completing some things inside.
Gotcha. Thank you. Oh, Ms. Abdo?
Yes, my answer is to comment. I would like to say I'm glad to see that we're using a local vendor.
Yes. Good point. Thank you.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The next one, there's actually two motions required. This was a good team effort with Kathy Hood from DPW and Gary Harris in purchasing. So another one of these MDEO piggybacks have worked very well. What you have before you, the first motion is to concur to administration and consent to the piggyback MDEO contract 071B6600119. That's for a purchase of a Freightliner conventional chassis assault truck from D&amp;K Truck Company. The amount of that is $87,662. And that's the motion on the first one.
And Chair, I'll make that motion that we purchased a Freightliner conventional assault truck from D&amp;K Truck Company.
Part?
Okay. It's been motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb to concur with administration and consent to piggyback on the MDEO contract number 071B6600119 for the purchase of one Freightliner conventional chassis assault truck from D&amp;K Truck Company in the amount of $87,662. Any discussion?
These are also just out of the motor vehicle capital outlay account as well.
Thank you. Well, I would like to say I think it's been a while since we purchased a assault truck.
Okay.
A very long time.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you. And the second motion is for the part that makes it usable, which is the dump piece on back that will actually hold the salt. And that request is to concur to administration and consent to the piggyback MDEO contract. The count's listed for the purchase and installation of a Monroe 10-foot radius dump body. Truck and Trailer Specialties, Inc. is the company. The amount is $9,605.
Is that right? 94?
Nine, yeah, 9,600.
That's 9,000?
That's for the, so you, the first one was for the cab and the frame and so forth. This is what adds the dump body to it. To make it usable, because what you get from D&amp;K is just a.
Yeah. It says 94,000.
It says 94,6, 94,605.
Why does it say 9,600?
It does say that, but if you go in the detail, it says a different amount. So I'm just wondering if that's a typo, I guess is my question.
Funds verification?
Yeah.
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 I showed 9,605 for the dump body.
Okay, so it's 9,605.
Correct.
So the expenditure, no, I'm sorry. Well, let me get the.
Where are you seeing that?
On the verification page. I'm looking at an amount of $87,662 for the chassis and $94,605 for the other piece.
I think they're just adding the two together.
So the total purchase price is $182,000.
I think it's a typo.
Typos.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that one is, but because the price of the dump is just, is the 9,605.
Okay. Okay.
Motion that's being.
Okay. Okay.
And the chassis was the 87,600.
87, okay. Okay, cool beans. Thanks. Any more discussion? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I see a hand raised from our purchasing.
Oh, okay.
Is under discussion? Should we?
Oh, wait, go through the, are we under discussion?
Sorry, I don't think the motion's been made.
I'm sorry. Motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb to, I'm sorry, to concur with administration and consent to piggyback on MDEO contract number 2000000000034 for the purchase and installation of a Monroe 10-inch radius dump body from Truck and Trailer Specialties, in the amount of $9,605 for the.
No.
Public works. Yeah, I need verification. Okay.
Hey, Ellen?
I have a hand raised from our purchasing director.
Can you hear me? Hey, Ellen? Hey, Ellen, this is Gary Harris. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, the correct amount is the 94,605. The dump body is the more expensive piece of this.
So Gary, the question, can you hear me? So on the fund verification form, so that total price that's listed, $182,267, that's combined dump body and the chassis, is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yes, exactly. The total is, is that amount you just stated, yes.
So I see. So the typo was on the motion that they left out the four, so it should have been 94,605, is that what you're saying?
Yes, on the fund verification page. Yeah.
So to clarify, under discussion of motion, so what Gary is saying is that the second motion for Truck and Trailer Specialties, Inc. would be correct based on what the fund verification, so it's 94,605.
Okay. That's what I saw.
So then that would equal the total price that's listed. So that's not a typo. The typo was on the wording of the motion they left out a four.
Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you, Gary.
You good?
Yes.
Okay, remotion. Make the remotion.
Okay. Yeah. Yes.
All right, I'll make that motion. Correct the motion for the radius dump body from the Truck and Trailer Specialty in the amount of $94,605.
Support.
It's been motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb to, for the remotion to concur with administration and consent to piggyback on MDEO contract for the amount of $94,605. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, Council, and thank you, Gary, for clearing that up. The next item that's before you is item F. What you have is a recommendation from Captain Monte and Gary Harris, Purchasing Director. This one is the request to concur to administration and award bid RFP 19/20-32. That's for an as-needed sanitation. as-needed sanitation and disinfecting service for city facilities and vehicles. Lowest, most responsible and responsive bidder, uh, Go Spotless Cleaning LLC. Uh, the cost is, uh, seven cents per square foot or twenty-five dollars per vehicle, uh, for Romulus Police Department on an as-needed only, uh, to supplement during the COVID epidemic. Those funds have been, uh, available and verified. Uh, the public safety police department COVID expense account is listed.
To the chair, if I may?
Thanks, Ms. Webb. Make that motion to concur and award.
Support, discussion.
It's been motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Abdo, to concur with administration and award RFP nineteen slash twenty dash thirty-two for as-needed sanitation and disinfecting services for the city facilities and vehicles to the lowest, most responsible, responsible and responsive bidder, Go Spotless Cleaning LLC, with the cost of seven cents per square foot and twenty-five dollars per vehicle for RFPD and as needed for other city buildings. Any discussion? Ms. Abdo?
Yes, uh, has any money been made available from the state or the federal government for COVID relief? And if so, would this qualify as a?
You know, there were some CARES Act dollars, uh, that fell into several different categories, and we also have some, um, requests for some grants in as well. Uh, I don't know that this one is covered in that. Uh, the other thing that we're, we're gonna do at a future date is we now have a, um, kind of a grant team, uh, we put together. Uh, so what I thought would be a good idea is to bring them as like a study session for council to kind of hear some of the requests that we have in. Doesn't mean you're gonna get awarded all those, but, uh, uh, anything that's out there, we're trying to look for opportunity for COVID. So, uh, that would probably be a great follow-up for that one, just to see if we actually did get. A lot of times we're trying to go back and get, uh, reimburse costs from COVID. Um, you know, we were successful in some of the things with, uh, uh, the hero pay and some other things that we got, but, uh, we're trying to find anything that fits CARES Act dollars, um, that we can utilize. So we'll, we'll, we'll let you know once we get that scheduled.
I just wanted to make sure there was a team of some sort that were actively pursuing.
Yep. In fact, the team is, is led by, uh, Kevin Kraus, uh, also by Jill Martin, who has been awesome at grants and in a new role. Uh, and of course, finance and a bunch of other people are involved in that PD. Uh, but it's, uh, it's a good way to make sure that, uh, nothing's falling through the cracks. And if there's an opportunity for grant dollars, we want to be asking and then following their criteria.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do know that in, in the times that we're in, it's actually first come, first served. So I'm really glad that we do have a grant team so that they can stay on top of that, because if we, um, wait too long, we will lose our chances of being reimbursed. And we can't do that.
Thank you. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, the next item is, uh, item G, and this is, uh, on the, uh, JAG grant or, uh, Justice Assistant Grant. Uh, what you have before you is a recommendation from, uh, Captain Monte. Uh, and this is to concur to administration, authorize Wayne County to apply for that, uh, funding and grant on behalf of the city of Romulus.
I'll make that motion to concur with the administration and authorize Wayne County to apply for the JAG, uh, funds grant on behalf of the city of Romulus. Support.
Motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb, to concur with administration and authorize Wayne County to apply for the JAG funds grant on behalf of the city of Romulus. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, the next one is a, uh, budget amendment. Uh, this is a, uh, introduction to budget amendment, uh, two zero slash twenty-one dash three. That's for the purchase of a Clemis, uh, compatible biometric fingerprint, uh, computer, uh, which is approved under resolution eighteen dash two-ten, uh, back in June eleventh of twenty eighteen. Procurement was delayed to allow for updated software conversion before this could be put into place.
We need a motion?
To the chair, I'll make that motion to concur with the administration and introduce this budget amendment.
Support, discussion.
I have a motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Abdo, to concur with administration and introduce budget amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash three for the purchase of a Clemis compatible biometric fingerprint computer, which was approved under resolution number eighteen dash two-ten on June eleventh, twenty eighteen. Discussion, Ms. Abdo?
So this was approved for the twenty eighteen budget then, right?
Yes, so that's where I'm ending it so it can be done now. You had to do the upgrade first, so that's what you're approving. It's just a budget amendment.
No more discussion. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, and the one we've all been looking for, the last one, I, um, uh, is a, another budget amendment. Uh, this request is to concur with administration and the introduction of budget amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash four is to cover the costs associated with the Farms sub-lift station, uh, rebuilding a pump and replacement of circuit board, uh, that runs an alternate pump. Uh, it's for fifteen thousand, five hundred, and this is for the, uh, in the Farms subdivision, the, um, the pump necessary to keep operation in our system.
To the chair, I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and introduce this budget amendment twenty twenty-one dash four to cover costs associated with the Farms sub-lift station. Support.
It's been, uh, motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Williams, to concur with administration and introduce budget amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash four to cover costs associated with the Farms sub-lift station, lift station, rebuilding a pump and replacing the circuit board running, uh, alternate pump. Any discussion? Hearing, uh, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, counsel. It concludes my report.
Number six is the clerkship report. Although I do not have any action items, but, uh, if you would allow me, I just would have some acknowledgements and, uh, with regards to the election. And, um, just some thank yous, uh, with regards to the process. This was a challenging election, um, one, because of all of the, the push for the, uh, voting by mail, the absentee voting. Um, and then two, the challenge with COVID nineteen and, um, with, uh, social distancing and keeping everyone safe. So it did add some layers to this. And so, uh, there was, it was a lot of work. We weren't sure what it was going to look like. Um, but because of, uh, some individuals that I would like to acknowledge, we were able to, to make it through on election day. And, uh, there's always little hiccups, but I think overall, things did go, did go well. And so if you would allow me, counsel, just to acknowledge, um, some few individuals. Um, first, I would like to acknowledge my staff, uh, Bambi Stanley, uh, Don Taylor, Ann Lammers, and, um, Barb Fitzgerald. You know, Barb's part-time, but still she played a huge role in this. Um, as you know, with, um, the, the absentee voting, the numbers had increased. And just want to give you an example just how much. Uh, we actually mailed out four thousand, five hundred and ninety-six absentee ballots, and we had eighty-one percent return, which was.
Wow.
Third, three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two ballots that were processed. Um, over, uh, overall, um, in Romulus, we had twenty-eight point nine, ninety-four percent of voter turnout, and that included the AVs and the precincts. So we had a total of five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven voters who turned out at the polls. But what's really significant about this is that in two thousand sixteen, the last presidential, uh, during that, that cycle, that primary, um, we processed a total of nine hundred and fifty-two ballots. And this was just total, overall.
Wow.
That, that was in two thousand sixteen. Uh, my team, they processed, actually, it, it was just amazing. In one day, nine hundred and fifty-two ballots, absentee ballots on election day. So, uh, I really want to thank the residents who utilized the Dropbox, the, the Dropboxes, but, uh, they worked really hard. We had some new technology, uh, in place. Um, so I want to give a shout out to our AV counting board. Again, we had some new technology, and they were up for the challenge. They even came in earlier to help us because just, just the paperwork alone is just massive. And so they were able to, they came in just to help us and, uh, to get, you know, s- stay on track. So, and they stayed to the wee hours, too. So we want to thank our AV counting board. I would like to thank all of our election inspectors, the chair and co-chair. Um, you know, everybody was uncertain, unsure, and the whole mask wearing and things, but they, I, I have to say, kudos to Romulus, you know, when it thinks, uh, uh, when, when it's time to step up, we do. And I, Romulus was very fortunate than other communities. We had at least five inspectors in every precinct. So we were not short in our precincts at all, where other communities were really struggling to get, um, election inspectors. So our election inspectors came out. They worked hard. They went through training. They observed social distancing. They worked hard on making sure things were sanitized and wiped down. So really, the, um, they were very odd, they, they were awesome. So, uh, thank you to the election inspectors. Um, thank you to the receiving board. At the end of the night, has to receive everybody and, and check everything. And so they have a, they have a late night. Um, to our road clerks, uh, we have, um, several road clerks, uh, Roger Kadoo. He is just always there. I want to thank Roger Kadoo, uh, Bucky Bertog, uh, Dan Bales. Want to thank Sean Mullins from the Finance Department and helped screen. All of our election workers were screened. They screened each other. So, um, they really did comply with, with the social distancing and the COVID guidelines. So Sean Mullins helped, uh, screen, and he also, uh, after he got off of work, came to help us out, road clerk. Uh, we want to thank, uh, Mandy from the Treasurer's Office. She volunteered, uh, well, you know, some time to help us out there. Um, also, we have, um, we have, we, we have Andy McKay, he was earlier. Uh, we got to see that new sprayer machine and, and sanitizing. So, uh, for the rack, Rose Swidem, the Senior Center, uh, West Village Estates, uh, the interim superintendent, Billy Garland, uh, Romulus PD, who had to escort me like in the wee hours of the morning to, after the polls close, uh, DPW, Justin Liscasten, Roger Staten, and their crew. Those guys were just amazing. I, I probably ran them ragged. I just, you know, but picking up equipment, delivering equipment, dropping things off. So I really want to, uh, give a big shout out to them. To our IT department, Steve Dudek, he was there, didn't leave until we made sure everything was, was transmitted. So, um, thank you, Steve. I'm sorry, I'm hurrying up. I'm doing the Wattsworth thing with my long list. Uh, to the mayor, to, to the administration, um, to, uh, Dominion Voting, who came in. We want to acknowledge Magnum Tools, who made sure we had, in fact, the sneeze guards you have. They made sure that we had, um, uh, the sneeze guards. Um, and then I, some special individuals here. We want to acknowledge Carol Bales, who made, who gave us a wonderful, uh, snack basket with full of goodies, and dear Jan Lemon, who makes sure every election that we have some healthy snacks. She brings a wonderful veggie tray and dip and a wonderful cake. And, uh, so she makes sure that we're, that we're snacking healthy. Uh, Councilwoman Abdo and her cookies. Uh, thank you to, uh, Councilwoman Tally, who shadowed me and, and helped out the end of the night. To our city treasurer, who came and they were offering wherever their hands, you know, to, to help us out. Um, I, I really want to thank you all again, because we can't, it takes a team. There's not, there's, this isn't something I could have handled on my own. So I want to thank you. Um, but there's a special gentleman that I would like to acknowledge, and I'm going to ask if you would adopt a resolution to acknowledge this gentleman. He's a retired Army Sergeant, uh, in our community, and his name is Anthony Yates. Mr. Yates came in and, um, you know, when we first was, it, um, had our, our new, our new election equipment was initiated, he was part of that. So he knows our election equipment, and so he's retired. And so he came in offering his service to help us because, again, the, the machines had to be sanitized a certain way. We had specific guidelines on how we had to clean the machines. And then with all the ballots and then trying to prep machines and clean and, and, and all the heavy things, Mr. Yates came in and spent hours helping us, just upon hours. And then we had to set up the, the precincts. And, um, Mr. Yates on his own, he was out there setting up. Roger was over here, uh, Bucky Bertog was over here. We were all over the place trying to get our precincts set up. And Mr. Yates has just been an awesome person who loves our city. He served our country. He loves elections. He's, he was running around making sure everybody was taken care of. So, um, if you would mind to oblige to adopt him, um, a resolution, just a resolution of appreciation for his service, uh, with the, uh, working in the, uh, August fourth, uh, twenty twenty primary election.
To the chair, I'd like to make that motion for, for the resolution to acknowledge with appreciation to Anthony Yates.
Ms. Abdo? Okay, it's been motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Abdo, for a resolution of appreciation for Anthony Yates for his service on the August fourth primary election. Um, any discussion? Hearing, uh, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, counsel. And again, thank you all for your support. That concludes my report.
And real quick, Ms. Abdo, I just want to say, um, I got a chance to witness everything you said. Um, it was, it was just very momentous with the challenges of COVID nineteen. You know, I just thought you guys did a magnificent job. And just going back to what I was saying earlier about the, uh, Down River Historical Organization, working together. Um, this is to promote our history, which is important, working together to, for our community, and that's what we do in Romulus. So just, I just want to piggyback off the thank you you gave. It was amazing to sit there. Let, thank you for letting me shadow you, um, and just watching everything at all the polling stations. It may have been hiccups, but for COVID nineteen, I thought you did an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
And to the chair, if I may, I'd like to thank our clerk for being that leader.
Yeah.
Thank you. You have done excellent, excellent job. You want to do it all, but I think you're finding out you need some help. But you are so far above expectation because you've not been in the municipality arena before you were elected, and you are doing a heck of a job. And that's what I call leadership.
And I need to mention the ministerial alliance. They prayed for us. I, I reached out to Reverend Willis and said, we need prayer. I, I asked him, I said, please pray. And, and to our community, I, the community was amazing, and they were very patient, um, because we had to social distance, and, and they were very patient and cooperative. So that says a lot about our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. What, Ms. Williams?
I would just like to say this. I was on a phone call today, and they were saying how we have to get the numbers up for AV votes, ballots coming in. And they were saying the cities are so low, and they was having issues. I said, excuse me. Our clerk announced that we had fifty-eight percent of the ballots to come back in last Monday, the day before the election. So maybe other cities have issues, but let me tell you about Romulus. So you can't include us all. So I told him, we have a great clerk. We have a good mayor that works with the clerk and makes sure she has whatever she needs. So I, I just wanted to add that in because that conversation did come up, and I was bragging on our city.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any other comments?
Yeah, if I could also just chime in, I mean, I think when Ellen's reading through those names, if people are listening at home, there's a lot that goes into this. And these, yeah, these elections are, are big deals, especially with the COVID. And so, uh, we got through that, next to general election, because it's coming right on the heels of it. So.
Yeah.
There's no rest. But, uh, you know, just thanks for everybody who chimed in, and thank also for the community. I mean, we've got another big election coming up in November, so we're gonna do our best. And I just, uh, ask that we continue to support our clerk and her efforts and everyone's efforts to make it a, a successful process. It's, it's the best system in the world, uh, especially when it works well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you, Mayor. One more thing, I hope, by, um, my colleagues listening to what our clerk just stated, that we will, that you will consider, um, canceling the November second council meeting. that we will, that you will consider canceling the November 2nd council meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Webb.
Thank you, everyone. Again, thank you, Mayor. Takes us to number seven, Treasurer's Report.
Good evening, counsel, mayor, clerk, and audience. I do not have any items under my report, but I do want to say good job with the election and everyone that jumped in to help you. Did a wonderful job.
Thank you. All right, takes us to public comment. And this is a portion of the agenda that is set aside for those in the audience that would desire to have comments. If you would like to have comments, please raise your hand. And after you've been acknowledged, we ask that you please state your name. You have three minutes to speak and any additional time would be upon the consent of the chairperson. Those that have joined electronically, we ask that you indicate that you would like to speak using the raise hand method. Again, if you dialed in, you can press star nine. And if you're, if you're using the Zoom meeting app, use the raise hand icon. And we do have one written request this evening, Madam Chair. And this is coming from Dale Justice. Mr. Justice.
Evening, councilmembers. Dale Justice, 13510 East St. Row. Last Monday, the city sent out a mail thing to me, a letter explaining footage and all that. And it still says 50-foot yard setback. I got a meeting, I guess, Wednesday with the mayor. But I just wanted you guys aware that everything that they've come up with, it says 50 feet setback. Nothing different. I don't know how he can build a pond that close. It says right on here that you have to be 50 feet. And I just wanted to let you guys know. And still, there have not been no water truck out there. The gentleman from the company said the next day would have been on that Tuesday. Well, two weeks, no water truck whatsoever. You know, he lied to us, that's what he's been doing to me all the time. I don't want to fight with the council, I don't want to fight with the city. I feel I have a legitimate reason why I'm here. If not, I'm not here to gripe with everybody, but I feel I have a reason why. And another thing, you know, the mayor said that one of the directors or somebody went past my house and said I flipped them off. Well, I know, I don't know what the guy drives. I know the city officials don't have stickers on their cars. And there's a lot of people up and down East St. Row. And why would I flip somebody off when I don't even know what the guy drives? If he would have stopped at the house or something like that, it'd be different. But the mayor said he drove by and I don't know who drives by. And, you know, if you don't see a sticker on a car, you don't think it's anybody. And generally, when the sticker comes in, they'll pull in the driveway, not drive them down the road. But I just wanted to come to collusion on this and get this straightened out. But I know the mayor is, we're going to have a meeting on Wednesday and hopefully they can see it. But the paper was out here and every time I showed you guys something, it's been for the 50 feet. And I've asked two weeks ago for something to show that is anything less than that and I haven't seen nothing yet.
Thank you, Mr. Justice. We'll have a response.
I'd like to input for a council, I got something.
We're going to have a response once we close out the public comment portion, okay?
I would just like to respond to Mr. Justice's comments because when he called me, I looked at what we received from the city attorney and also what he received. And we went through the fact that the one document does speak about the building, but there's another document there on that second page that speaks about the retention pond. And it's not clear, other than it refers back to the 50 feet. So I want to make sure that we get this clear, to make sure that we are on the same page. Because it's kind of confusing for it to speak of the building on the first page. But then on the second page, it just refer you back to the 50 feet. And so that's what I got. And I spoke to Julie earlier, Mayor, and, you know, mentioned that too. So I'm glad you set up a meeting with them so we can get down to the bottom of it. Because if the engineers, Julie was saying, if the engineers need to get involved in this because the ordinance is not clear, that's what needs to happen. We should have to keep going through this.
I've been trying to go through this all along since September 16th.
Well, we're going to get that address on the, after we close out the public comment, okay, Mr. Justice?
Okay, but it just says all yards meet the setback on the paper.
Okay, no, thank you. Julie noted. We have other?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Can we close that portion now? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Please come up. Sorry about that.
Hello, everyone. Mayor, my name is George Tom, a longtime resident of the city of Romulus. What I've, what I've observed here tonight is that we've got Aerotropolis wanting to do great expansions in our, in our city, in the area. Expansions, expansions of the airport again. Or have expansions of this airport gotten us in the past? I'd like to make that comment, have it be heard. I'd also like to say about this gentleman here, he's having an issue with, it's inflicting its quality of life by someone not abiding by building codes and variances and whatnot have you. And we can't correct a small operation, a small situation like this man's having here, how are we going to take care of this major developer that wants to come into our city? Sorry that I have such a poor taste of people wanting to develop my city, but I've been here for 25 years. I've seen a major intersection sit vacant for I don't know how long. Nobody's addressed that. They're looking for somebody else to come in and address it for them? I don't know. That's all I have to say. Have a nice evening and respect the quality of life of the residents, the residents of the city of Romulus.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Madam Clerk, we're going to close that out.
Number nine is...
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Webb?
Yes, I would just like to address one item to Mr. Justice.
Did you want to do it on the unfinished business or you want to do it now?
Well, I think we should do it now and then we don't have to worry about the...
Well, we're going to go through unfinished business anyway, so what do you mean?
I was addressing him as a, in a public comment.
Okay.
That's all. Tomorrow, I don't know, I don't think it's going to rain. But I want you to hear this. And I'm pretty sure we may have someone online and the mayor will hear this. That water truck, as I stated previously, and as hot as it has been, should have been out there on site every single day. And I'm a little bit, well, I just think that it should be out there, Mayor. If you could make that happen, please.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Abdo?
Isn't it by law, it has to be out there?
It was, it was the agreement that it was going to be out there. I'll make sure it is.
Okay, we're going to, okay, Ms. Madam Clerk, we're going to close the public comment section out, please.
Number nine is unfinished business.
All right, thank you. Did you want to?
Yeah, I had a couple of things under unfinished to go over. I guess going back to my report, Councilwoman Abdo asked about grants and since that time, I did receive, we got $47,000 in a Department of Justice grant for sanitizing so far. And so we'll look for more. So that was an answer to that question. Also, a follow-up to Andy McKay's talk right after this meeting for the public, if you're listening, there was some video walkthrough done at the rack. So they're going to be kind of showcasing the new procedures that were put in place. So if you're at home and you want to watch that, stand by. Right after, you can watch the video. The only comment I'll make on Mr. Justice is that we do, we have a meeting, I have the attorney Wednesday to kind of walk through that document and try to clarify any of those conversations. So I guess, you know, for counsel, if there's any, you know, lingering ones that you have, let us know. We can try to make sure that Steve Hitchcock does address those. We'll have someone from Building Department as well, too. And I'll make sure that that, that water truck issue is on the agenda, Councilwoman Webb. The, you know, the comment about the Aerotropolis and the, really, it's, they were talking more about development that is designed for that zoning. So we'll come back with some more things, as I mentioned, with how the incentives were, how that ties in. But we do have some significant opportunities that are coming, so stay tuned to that. That'll come probably as a form of a study session request, so just a couple of follow-ups. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Williams.
And I just want to say this on, I mean, Mr. Justice's situation. I know several weeks ago, when we was here talking about Mr. Justice's situation and the builder was also here, he promised then that he would have water trucks. So we shouldn't keep repeating the same request. If he's not keeping his word to have those water trucks there, this is not the first request. So I would ask the mayor to make sure, not that he gives a broken promise, but make sure he's there. And if he's not there, he should be, you know, fined or penalized because residents shouldn't have to suffer based on a contract to not doing what they promised.
Yeah, and let me check into it. He may well have been watering in some area that wasn't questioned. But let me find out about it and then we'll try to answer it with a thorough response.
Thank you. Okay. Are we good on unfinished business, Madam Clerk?
Number 10 is new business. Number 11 for approval was warrant 20-15 and warrant 20-15E. And if you notice, I had, there was an update to the warrant that was part of your package, but I placed that update because it was later this afternoon that I received it, you know, from Finance. So you have the amended.
Okay.
Thank you. And Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we pay warrant. First warrant, 20-15 in the following amounts. General fund, $84,579.22. Major street fund, $3,303.45. Local street fund, $38,090.38. Public safety fund, $15,620.52. Cable TV, $424.76. Mayor Monroe Road Special Assessment, excuse me, $2,512.39. Garbage and rubbish collection fund, $45.33. Michigan Indigent Defense Fund, $27,745.83. 9/11 Service Fund, $710.18. NARC Forfeiture State, $1,413.68. Library Fund, $20,302.63. DDA, $3,852.7. Tifa District 2, $605,078.40. Tifa Finding Road Construction, $3,492.44. Water and Sewer Fund, $608,453.77. Motor Vehicle Fund, $9,855.75. Technology Services, $6,840.90. Retiree Insurance Benefits, $44,431.61. Revolving Fund, $3,799.29. Current Tax, $604.18. Payroll Fund, $18,252.38. Totalling all funds, $1,499,409.16. Support? Support.
It's been motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb, for the approval of warrant number 20-15 for checks presented in an amount of $1,499,409.16. Any discussion? Ms. Abdo? Yes, Ms. Webb? Yes, Ms. Williams? Yes, Chair votes? Yes, motion approved.
I do have it, sorry. I'm choosing the other one. All right, I'd like to make a motion, we pay warrant 20-15E in the following amounts. This is a pay for the election workers, $15,913. Support.
Been motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb, for the approval of warrant 20-15E for checks presented in an amount of $15,913 for the August 4th, 2020 election workers. Any discussion? Ms. Abdo? Yes. Ms. Webb? Yes. Ms. Williams? Yes. Chair votes? Yes, motion approved.
Number 12 is communication.
No, wait a minute. I'm sorry, Ms. Williams?
Yes. I would first like to welcome all residents to the high school tomorrow for Forgotten Harvest from 12 o'clock to 3:00. And all you need to do is give your name, how many's in the family, and also your zip code. Also, I'm excited because we've been working on this for the last maybe three and a half months. We have a drive-through and walk of covert testing coming to the city of Romulus Thursday, August 20th, 2020, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Mount Olive Baptist Church, 35565 Beverly Road. It's located in Romulus. You can call for more information, 734-506-0676 or 734-673-8396. It's hosted, one of the sponsors is Western Wayne County Family Health Center, has partnered with Wayne County NAACP, the Penn Enrichment Community Center, Romulus Citizens for Social Change, the Telegram News, and Mount Olive Baptist Church. Who can get tested? Everyone 12 years and older. What to bring? Photo ID, insurance cards. Test covered by most insurance plans, no charge for people without insurance. Results will be available within five to 10 days. Your appointments, come anyone, you will be worked into the schedule. Everyone should be tested. I am so excited that we finally brought this to the city of Romulus and they're working, as we speak, on going into both senior centers to test those seniors. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. To the chair, if I may.
Ms. Webb?
Would you give the time again?
1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Thank you. Drive-through or walk?
Any more communications?
Okay. That takes us to the last item on the agenda, which is number 13, adjournment. Some more support?
Okay. Been motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Williams for the adjournment of the meeting. Ms. Webb? Ms. Williams? Yes. Ms. Abdo? Chair votes? Yes, we are adjourned.